Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. City Council is reajourning from closed session. We have one item to report. By a vote of five zero, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Willie Ong versus Lieutenant Dan Schnepel slash City of Elk Grove in the United States District Court, Eastern District of California, case number two, colon nineteen, dash C V, dash zero, one, nine, five, zero, dash M C E, dash D B. That being the case, want to adjourn the special meeting and want to call the regular City Council meeting to order on Wednesday, December eleventh at six thirty six P M. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, December thirteenth at one P M. and Tuesday, December seventeenth at six P M. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable dot T V. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity dot org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number twenty ten, dash two four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card that the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room and provide to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here.
And next item.
Take us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite the, and I'm predicting the future here, it's going to be have to be the will of the Council, but I'm predicting that the next Vice Mayor is going to be Stephanie Wen, so just want to throw it out there, but if you could lead us on Pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world of citizens, one nation, where our honor is visible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, and at the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the Council would like to invite the members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and next item.
Take us to item one A, which is a special action item to consider selection of the Vice Mayor and conduct the reorganization of the Elk Grove City Council. This is an item prescribed by the norms and procedures in which the first meeting in December, we decide upon the Vice Mayor who will preside for the next upcoming year. At the option of the City Council, if you do like, we can either rearrange seats tonight. We don't have a planned reception or break that would go in. Another option is that we can make the term of the Vice Mayor effective at the end of the meeting or that the seats can change by the time we have a next meeting. So that would be at the prerogative of the Council, but by motion, we'd ask that you select the Vice Mayor for the upcoming year.
Okay, at this point, I want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, I want to close public comment and council deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you forecasting that, and I respect your, I'm going to say your prenomination for me to be the Vice Mayor, and while that is an honor, I will say in the next couple of months, I've got a lot of things on my plate, both personally and professionally, and I know that the Vice Mayor position is a person who's going to have to substitute in the situation where you're not able to be present in both meetings and community events and whatnot, so I would like to respectfully decline. However, I would like to nominate Councilmember Detrick for the Vice Mayor position.
I'll second that.
Got a nomination of Councilmember Detrick for Vice Mayor and a second. Shall we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention?
I think all abstain from the vote.
Too late. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wen. I was hoping that you would step up, and you know, I understand the demands of your day job, and I appreciate that. And of course, now to confuse people with Warren, we've got two Steves, right?
You get two for the price of one. How about that? All right. Stephanie, that was very eloquently said. You know, I'm honored that you and the Council unanimously supported. It's, I think, all you, everybody who's held that position, as well as Mayor, we don't take this lightly, and I look forward to serving the city, our whole city team, as well as this Council alongside you as the Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And shall we make this official by the end of the meeting, or do you guys want to play musical chairs now?
End of the meeting is fine with me if everybody else is okay with that.
Okay. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Two, Approval of the Agenda.
Okay, we have an agenda.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstention? Next item.
Under Section Three, we have no closed session items, which will take us to Section Four, Presentations and Announcements, and that item being four point one, the presentation of a certificate of recognition to Kinder Morgan for their donation to support the creation of a tree planting program in Elk Grove.
Okay, do we have our representative? Mr. Vice President Allen Farr, where are you? Come on up, please.
Right there.
Yeah, come on up. So just to bring the members of the Council up to speed, I've been in and talked with this gentleman for a while now, and Kinder Morgan has made a generous contribution to plant trees in our wonderful city, and we thought of an opportunity to not just do it for the city property, but also to join in with CST and also the school district. So work is being done on that, but we're very fortunate to have you here tonight, and we do have a recognition item, and I'm going to go ahead and start, and then I'm going to invite the City Council to come on down for the presentation, and then we'll allow you to say a few words as well. All right? So this is in regards to Kinder Morgan donation of $10,000 to support the creation of a tree planting program in the City of Elk Grove. Kinder Morgan provides energy, transportation, and storage services in a safe, efficient, and environmentally responsible manner for the benefit of people, communities, and businesses. And Kinder Morgan is a major supplier of gasoline, diesel, and jet fuel to the Sacramento Metropolitan area and the City of Elk Grove. And Kinder Morgan is a committed corporate citizen contributing to the communities in which they operate, and Kinder Morgan, S F P P North Line, refined products pipeline in the Bradshaw Terminal, a thirty-five acre terminal which stores over four hundred and forty-six thousand barrels of gasoline, diesel, jet fuel, and ethanol operating in Sacramento County. And Kinder Morgan presented a contribution of $10,000 to the Elk Grove Community Council to support the creation of a tree planting program in the City of Elk Grove. Kinder Morgan is proud to have supported tree planting programs in several other cities and have continued this commitment to the environment in the City of Elk Grove. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby extends its thanks and commends the generous donation and the fine example set by Kinder Morgan contributing to the welfare of our community. Kinder Morgan raises the level of philanthropy, leading with a giving spirit, promoting participation and involvement to make our region a better place to live. Signed on this eleventh day of December two thousand and nineteen by the entire City Council. So let's do the photo op first. Members, good?
You can say a few words?
Yeah.
Anybody want this?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and I appreciate the resolution, and more importantly, I appreciate your efforts in working to identify a tree planting program for the city. As we have discussed previously, this is an initiative we have been successful in coordinating with cities across the country, and it's become a signature program for Kinder Morgan. So this is an initial donation of $10,000, but I hope that it is the beginning of a regular annual partnership with the city to continue your efforts at a green city, and trees are a very important part of that. And Kinder Morgan has been a big part of the community for many years. If you were to think about us, it's sometimes confusing about what exactly we do as a company, but if you drive a car, chances are the gasoline in that car came from our facility in Rancho Cordova, and we have pipelines servicing this area here. So we're the primary source of gasoline, diesel, and jet fuel, including Sacramento International Airport for this part of California. So look forward to a long partnership, and I hope Mayor will have a chance to plant some trees together in two thousand and twenty.
So just for the Council's information, we're working on a date in spring, and it's going to be a partnership with CST and also the school board, and I'll have Mary, who works in my office, she's going to be planning this and be contacting all of you so that we can have a day of planning.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Five, Public Comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less for a large number of requests to receive on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the Council or the City Manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
Awesome, and just a reminder, each of you have three minutes. You know, I don't mean to be rude, but we're trying to get through as many people as possible. So first two minutes, the light will change, and then the last minute, you have an opportunity to summarize your comments. So, you know, I'm just asking each and every one of you to be courteous to the next speaker. Our first speaker that we have in line is Brian Erickson. Following Brian is Bruce Friesch.
My name is Brian Erickson. I'm with owner of Big B Construction, the concrete subcontractor for the Elk Grove Aquatics Commons Project. I have an email that I want to read with the author here to my right, Mr. Warner. The email, this email is addressed to Alvin Wong, an employee of Wildan Engineering, also the city architect. The city carefully considered the nature and extent of the cracking and spalling occurring within the special concrete paving. Our determination, based on the evidence and research we've done, is that the cracking and spalling is a result of a design error and/or omission with regard to improper concrete design. As such, is our position that Wildan is responsible for any loss or damage the city incurs as a result. That being said, this Friday, as you know, we're going into mediation. It is Big B's intention to settle, but if the settlement cannot be reached, it's my plan that until a judgment is rendered, I will be at one council meeting a month to keep the taxpayers of Elk Grove informed about this litigation and convey to voters who actually run this city. I'll bring facts. Did you know that over ninety Wildan employees have City of Elk Grove emails? Ninety Wildan employees. Have you ever heard of the word deontology? Deontology is the study and theory of ethics, rules, of right and wrong actions, determining the right way to live based on a duty and moral obligation. Basic rule, treat others how you wish to be treated. I think you guys all need to take a real deep thought of that, because where this has gone is crazy.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Bruce Friesch. Following Bruce is Lynn Wheat.
Hello, I come before you to appeal to the elected leaders of this Council. I appreciate Mr. Soen, you looked at his eyes the whole time. That was very nice of you to do. Following a court appearance for a traffic violation, I appeared in Elk Grove for some records, some Elk Grove P D, and I was refused those records. Per California Public Records Act, there's two ways to get records, and that is either to go in to view those records or file the request. The agency can't dictate which. So from there, I went to the clerk's office and requested the records, and ten days later, I received something totally inadequate for my need. I talked to the clerk on a couple occasions, he was very nice, and he referred me to the P D via request to Lieutenant Schnepel. I called and talked to Lieutenant Schnepel, met with him for almost an hour, explained what my request was, and per C P R A, the agency is to help with that request to make sure that what I request and what they have is matched. After a meeting for an hour, I emailed him on two occasions, and he never responded back. Next, I called the chief, spoke to his assistant. When they hung up, there was an unflaring comment. It happens. I spoke and finally I talked to the chief. We had a good conversation until I asked him what, if he knew what primary facial was. Became a little upset. After we calmed down, we went through and talked about what I requested. I met with the chief for probably about forty-five minutes, an hour again. I left, received an email from Lieutenant Schnepel again, saying the city had provided all the records they had provided. In court, my ticket had not been filled out completely, and I asked the officer why not. His response was, I don't have to. Does that, is that the chain of command from Elk Grove P D that we don't have to fill out these tickets appropriately? The weather wasn't filled out, the conditions. And when you're driving a road and when tickets are issued, that's an important issue. I asked the officer if he tested his LiDAR. He said he did by, on his bike, he looked at a stop sign and pushed his button. Asked him if he had an electrical engineering degree to understand what that means. All that means is that it's on. So next, I asked him for his documentation, he tested his equipment. No documentation. So I've spent my time trying to get documents from Elk Grove. Elk Grove doesn't, the P D don't carry the documents, and they don't care if they fill out the documents. So I'm here before you to help or ask for a request that you make that important. Now, obviously, I have to call somebody to do that, but I think it's very important. Democracy only works with an informed electorate, and if we don't have that, we don't have democracy. Thank you.
Okay, so are you asking that you're not getting the information, or I'm a little bit lost? What are you requesting?
I'm requesting information on officer accountability in what they do in that specific job. I mean, no by way looking for anybody's job. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for, how does the chief, through his chain of command, hold officers accountable to actuate appropriate work on the road? If he doesn't fill out his ticket, that doesn't do us any good. If there's nothing documentation, if he actually tests his equipment, how do we know it's tested? There's no log. Is that what the chain of command requires? I'm looking for that information.
Okay, well noted. What I suggest is I'm going to have you talk to one of the officers in the back, and he'll connect you with the right people. Do appreciate the suggestion. I think that's important as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Mark Graham.
Good evening. As you are aware, I try to make as many council meetings as I can. However, the last council meeting I missed, and oftentimes, things are hidden under consent. And in particular, this last time, was an item in which you approved eighty thousand dollars for a wellness room for our city staff. Now, the issue I have with that is that we have two wellnesses, wellness rooms, so I'm just wondering if we use some of that four hundred thousand dollars that you approved for a spatial study to determine whether we actually did need another wellness room. So I do want to consider that maybe that we do, and so in that, if we're going to put a wellness room within this building, we also name our rooms, and we have like the Swenson Hawk Room. So since you've already determined that you're going to spend eighty thousand of our tax dollars for another wellness room, I think it deserves its sign, and it deserves to be illuminated. So, and it deserves a name. So I think we should call this particular wellness room the Mellow Roost Room, and I do that because you have no problem raising the mellow roofs or the assessments in areas. And people don't understand, because it's hidden within their mortgage payment, that their tax bills are going up. So you keep coming to us for more and more money, and I'm not quite understanding how you're determining which is the best use of our money. And I'm sure Councilman Hume, you'd like to look at this again and see this sign. I've spent a lot of time, and I'd like to donate it so that you don't have to pay for a sign. So here's the sign that can go on the door for our new Mellow Roost Room, because we can't provide lockers or another means for people to get to the wellness room when we have Join the Movement. We don't want them to have to move and leave a particular building to get to our room available. So here we go, we have our new Mellow Roost Room.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Our next speaker is Mark Graham. Mr. Mark Graham, come on up, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. First thing, I sued smud over the new electric rates for the next two years, and the basic argument is that the rates are in violation of Article thirteen C of the California Constitution because they are taxes and they were never approved by the voters. With any luck, you'll hear more about that. Also, I believe I emailed you about this. I told you earlier about the Berkeley Right to Know Ordinance regarding cell phones and how it had survived the legal battles, the legal challenge from the wireless industry. The latest development, which is just a few days ago, is that the United States Supreme Court chose to not take that case up on appeal. It had already been decided in favor of the City of Berkeley. So that's the end of their appeals. When the Supreme Court says we're not taking it, that's, that affirms the ruling, which was by the appellate court in favor of the City of Berkeley. So the City of Elk Grove should adopt a cellphone Right to Know Ordinance, just like Berkeley. Okay, I emailed you on December fifth about this case that affects the City, United Kewah Band of Cherokee Indians versus Federal Communications Commission. It affects this city and all cities as you deal with permits for cell antennas. Now, the city has something called police power, and it does apply in this case. Also, in the master license agreement, and I think in the zoning code that you approved in August and September, it says that the companies have to comply with all applicable environmental laws. One of those is the National Environmental Policy Act. I emailed you on December fifth about that and copied the staff, and Mr. Hobbs wrote back to me this morning, six days later, which, you know, it makes it hard for me to reply. I was out doing things all day, and I was, I finally replied to you late this afternoon, so hopefully you got that. I don't know if you had a chance to read it. Unfortunately, Mr. Hobbs misunderstands and has misrepresented both the law and that case. He's failed to read and apply forty-seven CFR, section one, point thirteen, twelve, and also the part of the FCC order at eighteen dash thirty that I quoted from in my email. But basically, we have a responsibility by the applicant to perform, to complete and file with the city what's called a NEPA checklist to determine whether it's, the proposed action, which is the permitting of a cell antenna, is going to significantly affect the quality of the human environment, and if it does, then they have to do an environmental assessment, and depending on that, they may have to do an environmental impact statement. So there are three stages of environmental review. I want to read this thing quotation from the FCC order. According to CTIA, Sprint has estimated that it has completed NEPA checklist for twenty thousand to thirty thousand sites at a cost of two thousand dollars per site. So obviously, it does apply. They really do have to do it. Sprint would not have spent two thousand dollars per site for that many sites to do a NEPA checklist.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
They didn't have to, and please require them to do it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. That is our final speaker, and let's go to the next item.
Take us on to item six, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Few items to note. Youth Commission is out in the City Council lobby this evening, holding a canned food drive, benefiting the Elk Grove Food Bank and those that are in need this time of the year, so encourage all members of the public to come on out and drop some items in the bins in the lobby here. Also, we had our first annual illumination event over the weekend. We had approximately four hundred and fifty people turn out in cold weather and rain and wind, but everybody had a great time and got to see our new beautiful ribbon tree and the run and the parade, and everything was a great success. It also gave the community an opportunity to kind of get its first glimpse of the new common space for future events and activities out there that we're excited about, looking forward to the opening of our community center in the near future. Just concluded No Shave November. Staff participated in this year and raised meet, or sorry, exceeded the goal of five thousand dollars by raising fifty-four hundred dollars for cancer research. I want to thank all staff for participating in that. Also, last Friday, roughly fifteen families with little ones attended an evening of hot chocolate crafts and storytime with Chief Albright here in the council chambers. He read the K Angel book, Careers. The book was created to encourage children to dream big and explore limitless career opportunities. Kids in attendance received free edition of the book and got to meet the author, Elk Grove resident, Khadija Phillips. Also, police department began conducting bait package operations called Operation Grinch starting on December fourth. Officers will be in unmarked vehicles patrolling neighborhoods throughout the city looking for suspicious porch pirate activity. Operations will be conducted during various dates, times, and locations throughout the end of the month. The Kasuna C S D is recommending award of a construction contract for the Singing Car Park in Laguna Ridge at their meeting on December eighteenth. This will be the C S D's one hundredth park. This is a five-acre neighborhood park. The cost approximately two point one million dollars for construction, anticipated to begin this spring, with completion by the end of the year or early two thousand and twenty-one. Republic Services will be changing the collection days for some residents beginning the week of January thirteenth. Changes were necessary to rebalance the routes in Laguna Ridge area due to its growth. Approximately twenty-six hundred homes or five percent of all households in the city will be impacted. Notifications for those affected and included, will include cart tags, in-person meetings as needed, and targeted announcements on next door. Residents with questions can contact Republic Services, nine one six, six three five, twenty five hundred. If you're leaving town for the holidays, police volunteers will check the exterior of your home Monday through Friday while you're away. They'll even secure any delivered packages until your return. Submit a request for this free service at least three days prior to your departure. Call nine one six, four seven eight, eighty one hundred, or visit ElkGrovePD dot org. And finally, the city will be observing holidays over this season, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. And that is all I have to report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Council might have.
Any questions? No questions, perfectly clear. All right, let's go to the next item, Council Report. First up is Councilmember Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a lot of, with the holidays, a lot of great events going on. As the City Manager mentioned, the Illumination Festival with this great change, first time we've had a major event like this on the west side of town, and still had the tree lighting a few weeks ago with the traditional tree in Old Town, and now the new ribbon tree, which is getting a lot of exposure, not only here in Elk Grove, but far beyond, and my understanding is there's only six, six of these ribbon trees in the world, I believe. So that's a, that's a pretty, pretty nice touch for us though, here in Elk Grove to have that. As mentioned, the parade was, our parade got rained on, so to speak, in more ways than one, but it was definitely for a first event, you know, the, got some bugs to work out, and I think just every year from here on out, it's just going to get better and better. And I know that the, the team put their heart and soul into that event, and they've taken all the positive and anything that's constructive that they can improve on, all they'll add to next year. In that, last Saturday morning was the inaugural raising of all the veterans' flags next to our new community Veteran Center senior facility, and it was a very, very touching event because it was tied in with the remembrance of Pearl Harbor, and there was a full military ceremony, and I know that the mayor was there, he had a chance to speak, Assemblyman Cooper was there. And I know that the team put their heart and soul into that event, and they've taken all the positive and anything that's constructive that they can improve on, all they'll add to next year. In that, last Saturday morning was the inaugural raising of all the veterans' flags next to our new community Veteran Center senior facility. And it was a very, very touching event because it was tied in with the remembrance of Pearl Harbor. And there was a full military ceremony, and I know that the mayor was there, he had a chance to speak, Assemblyman Cooper was there, Jason, our city manager, was there, as well as a lot of residents and various branches of the military that were represented. It was one of those things that I'll never forget because not only was the ceremony very touching, but the moment the ceremony started, a full arch rainbow over the top of the event that stayed during the whole ceremony, and then about halfway through the ceremony, and I've never seen this, a second rainbow arch over the top of that one. It was, you know, the only thing I could say is I think there was a little heavenly intervention on that ceremony. So it was, it was very, very touching. I had a chance to go to the Seroptimists put together a dinner at BJ's, and Councilwoman was also there. And it, really touching, they hosted this for 15 young girls who are foster children in the Elk Grove Unified School District. And I think they ranged from 13 to 16 years old. And the Seroptimists are doing a phenomenal job to try to give these young women opportunity to succeed. And I was honored to be there to have a chance to speak to them, and Councilmember Nguyen did a phenomenal job with her speech to the young ladies, is she actually, within her professional life, deals with a lot of those young women around the region. And then I had an opportunity to go to the Gresh's Holiday Party that represent the rural area, half of the rural area they represent. And it's always great to go to community events and be involved and engaged and hear from them, what is important to them, and celebrate the holidays. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I will be brief. I too enjoyed our illumination event. In light of the rain and the weather, to be able to have over 450 people come out to enjoy it was wonderful to see. I want to thank our staff, but also Kristin Lawrence for bringing that ribbon tree to us, because in pictures it was nice, but actually being there and seeing it, the picture doesn't do the tree justice. It really does look really nice there. I enjoyed that very much, so thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Sarah Bontrager for coming out. I held a District 4 community meeting right here in our council chamber around affordable housing. Several members from my district had some concerns and questions, and she did a phenomenal job in fielding those questions and answering some of the concerns that the community members have. We will be doing more of those sessions around in the community. I believe we're going to do one also in the beginning of the year, but it really did answer a lot of concerns that community members had. So I want to thank you because it was on a Sunday morning that she came out to do that. So thank you very much for that. And lastly, because we didn't have a meeting right after Thanksgiving or even prior to, I forgot to mention that in partnership with Assemblymember Cooper, Assemblymember Cooley, Assemblymember Cardy, and Scott Jones's office, I was able to hand out over 200 turkeys to the community. But also for the holiday, the Christmas holiday, we're able to give out 200 food boxes, along with family members that have young kids, a gift so that they can enjoy the holiday season as well, too. And I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a new year. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Soon.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief also. I also want to commend staff for their work on the illumination parade, and was a beautiful tree, a lot of work considering all the rain, and I want to thank all the vendors for coming out as well. Lyndon King, the community, Elk Grove Community Connections, for putting it on. Tomorrow, we have Sacramento Transportation Authority where the regional board will be talking about an expenditure plan, releasing an expenditure plan for transportation measure, potential transportation measure next year. Things like trying to relieve traffic on Elk Grove Boulevard, improving transit service, and fixing our roads. So important discussion. And then we also have a library authority meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Joined the mayor out at the Dickens Fair, the Old Town Tree Lighting Ceremony. Rained for that event, it was a smaller crowd, but it was a beautiful tree lighting and nice to see it. You can see that tree now, I think they added something like 3,000 new lights to it, so it's very bright. Unfortunately, I was out of town for the Illumination Festival and the Veterans Grove Dedication and the other tree lighting, and would have liked to have been there for that, but wasn't in town. Had the sanitation board meeting this morning, it was very brief. And then as Councilmember Soon mentioned, tomorrow, the Sacramento Transportation Authority will be discussing the expenditure plan, potential expenditure plan for a potential sales tax measure to be put on the 2020 ballot. And I implore anyone who has any interest, whether or not they support it, don't support it, have a particular way that they would like to see the money spent, anything having to do with it, come out and make your voice heard, because this is an important effort, and a lot of money will be spent pursuing it, so we need to make sure that it's worth pursuing and that there's a chance of victory. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. The only thing I'd like to add, obviously, a number of us attended these events within the city, is had an opportunity to host Elk Groveans at the Mong New Year. And for the public that may not be aware, there's this festival at Cal Expo, the Thanksgiving weekend on an annual basis. There approximately is about 50,000, and for the sake of next year, if anyone's interested in visiting and picking up some stocking stuffers, that's a great way to do it. And I was hosted allegation the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So that and mine, happy Mong New Year, happy holidays, and a happy new year. All right, let's move on. Next item.
Take us on to Section 8, our consent calendar items. And I did just want to note, there was a staff memo for Item 810, which had a correction for an omission on the attachment of the resolution. So we'd ask in the action tonight that it incorporates that staff memo correction for that item under 810.
All right, want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor? Opposed, abstention? Next item.
And that would be with the inclusion of the staff memo from 810. That will take us on to Item, or to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with Item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving a master license agreement for small cell wireless communications facilities between the city of Elk Grove and Verizon Wireless.
Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager, here to present to you the master license agreement with Verizon Wireless for the deployment of small cell facilities. Just a little bit of background on this project. On September 11th, the City Council adopted an ordinance amending Title 23, the zoning code, to facilitate the development of small cell telecommunications facilities throughout the city. Commonly referred to those as small cells. With that ordinance change, small cells in non-residential zones and commercial zones are allowed by right with an approved master licensing agreement. However, small cells in residential zones will require a minor use permit, even with a master licensing agreement, should those come forth after the initial agreement is Along with the ordinance change came some development standards for those antennas. Just briefly go through those for you tonight. First of all, no small cell wireless communications facilities shall be placed within 500 feet of another small cell wireless facility in residential zones. Furthermore, at the direction of council, we amended the code to not allow any small cell wireless facilities immediately adjacent to or across the street from the front yard of any residential dwelling. And also, we put parameters on the amount of equipment that can be installed on any one city facility, and we limited to that amount of equipment to approximately 28 cubic feet in volume. The code, in accordance with FCC standards, does allow applicants to make the case that they need to request relax standards. Those would be considered on a case-by-case basis, and the cell provider would have to provide substantial justification for such a request for relax standards. With this master licensing agreement, Verizon, that Verizon Wireless is proposing, it addresses the permit processing, the small cell locations, small cell designs, operation and maintenance of those facilities, the fees and payments to the city of Elk Grove, and the overall term as far as the life of the agreement. Just some specifics of the MLA, the Master Licensing Agreement. Approval of the MLA would allow Verizon Wireless to submit subsequent small cell permit applications consistent with the MLA for administrative approval by the Public Works Director. The MLA requires that all small cell facilities will have all applicable licenses, including those required by the FCC, permits, qualifications, and approvals prior to those installations. Future Verizon installations in residential zones would require an MUP before getting a site permit, so those would not be administrative approval. Those would have to go through the public hearing process for future installations in residential zones. As far as some of the other specific terms, this agreement carries a 10-year term with the opportunity for two consecutive five-year extensions for a total life of 20 years. The initial licensing fee for the license is $10,000. When they submit for permits consistent with the agreement, those site permits are $500, and the annual rent per site is $270. We have written in a contingency for annual rent should an FCC order be invalidated, and that would be $1,000 per facility installation. Before you, you can see the antenna designs. With this agreement, Verizon is proposing two designs, one for 4G technology and one for 5G technology. The 4G technology installation is similar to what you've seen with AT&amp;T. It's about a 30-inch canister on top of the light pole with two smaller control boxes mounted at a height of about 11 or 12 feet. What's different with Verizon, they're proposing a 5G installation, which consists of antenna units mounted below the top of the light standard, and those antenna boxes are approximately 20 to 24 inches tall. And those would be the only boxes. There would be no lower control boxes like the 4G installation. With this agreement, Verizon Wireless is proposing a total of 23 sites. You can see them noted on the map, both in yellow and green. The green are the 5G sites, and the yellow are the 4G sites. Most of these sites that Verizon is proposing are west of Highway 99. There is one site east. And as far as the 5G sites, those are mostly located along the Bighorn Corridor at the north end of the city. As far as environmental review, similar to the agreement with AT&amp;T, we found that no further environmental review is necessary pursuant to Section 15183, which is project consistent with a community plan or general plan. Sequa Section 15301 for existing facilities, and Sequa Section 15, that should actually be 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. The recommendation before you tonight is to find no further environmental review is necessary under those sequa sections, and approve the master licensing agreement for small cell wireless communications between the city of Elk Grove and Verizon Wireless. Staff is here to answer any questions, and the applicant is also present.
Any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think technically I'm only a council member at this point, but I'll take the title anyway. Question, Antonio? Why the annual, difference in the annual fee with respect to appeal of a federal decision, the $270 to $1,000?
I believe, maybe John can speak to this further, the current FCC order limits the amount the city can ask for annual rent for each facility, and that limit is $270. And if that order is invalidated, the city can basically set the standard for that.
So I think your question might be, and tell me if I'm wrong, I'll call you Vice Mayor Hume for now. Is with AT&amp;T, we had a staggered step, you may recall that. And Mr. Ablog is right that the federal FCC order sets the maximum amount that we can charge. What we've built into this agreement and the prior AT&amp;T agreement is a contingency that if the FCC order is set aside, we're allowed to charge greater, higher rents closer to what we would have charged but for the FCC order. The AT&amp;T agreement has a staggered step of 1,000, excuse me, 1,500 for the first 20 sites, 1,000 for the next 80 sites, and then 1,500, or excuse me, 500 for every site beyond that. When Verizon looked at that, they said, well, we'd prefer that it just simply be $1,000 across the board. It is administratively easier for us rather than having the staggered step. So what staff did is we kind of equalized that number and came up with a negotiated number of $1,000, as opposed to what AT&amp;T had requested of having these staggered steps. They roughly come out to about the same amount of money either way. It's just in Verizon's eyes, administratively easier to do a flat rate.
So, but I guess back to the issue about the federal decision, essentially, the steps within the AT&amp;T agreement are invalidated unless that decision is...
No, no, the other way around. So the amount that is being charged under both agreements, consistent with the FCC order, is $270 per site. If that decision is set aside, because there's pending litigation, the amounts go up automatically without a renegotiation. So that's the contingency. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor-elect Steve Dietrich.
Mr. Hume, you're much more than just a councilman.
Aw.
I have a question, I have a question, I have a question for you, John. Can you address the legality issues that were brought up earlier? Because I know they're going to get brought up again.
So there's a question as to whether or not NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, applies here. It doesn't. I appreciate Mr. Graham's points, he's read the case, and I think respectfully, he's simply misinterpreting the law. As a council, I think probably knows, you deal with this all the time. Sequa applies to state actions, which would also include local agency actions, and we've done an environmental analysis for that, as Mr. Ablog has explained, found that these particular sites in this project is exempt and covered by prior environmental documents. NEPA, the national equivalent of Sequa, the National Environmental Policy Act, only applies to federal approvals to federal actions. So I think where there might be some confusion, when the FCC acts as a federal agency, they have a NEPA obligation. They go through the process or have the applicant go through the process, and the FCC order talks about certain NEPA exemptions. What the federal case did that was referenced by Mr. Graham is as concerned further federal actions, for instance, they had some Indian tribes there that would require some federal actions, NEPA could be triggered. But as the council, I think maybe already knows, NEPA is inapplicable to local agency city actions. The law just simply doesn't apply. We apply with the state equivalent of that, which in some senses is usually more strict than the federal law.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Typically, it's everything that NEPA plus whatever California adds on top.
Generally, Sequa is more stringent.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope, no questions. Thank you. Let's see, that being the case, want to declare public hearing open. I'd like to invite the applicant to come on up and speak.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, and soon-to-be Vice Mayor Dietrich. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, staff, my name is Dante Williams, I'm with Verizon Wireless. I've spoken in front of his body several times, so you probably recognize my face. I'd like to also introduce my counterpart here.
Good evening, council members. My name is Craig Walkenhorst, Verizon Real Estate Manager.
So, since we've had so much comment on this, I want to keep my comments really brief and just remind everyone of, you know, what this is all about, why are we here, why are we doing this? You know, what does this mean for the community? Because that's what we're here for. We're here to provide a private, a private business investment to a public entity and partner with a public entity to provide a public good. And the reason why we're doing this, a lot of things that we're doing with our network, first of all, is it's all about capacity, and we've had that conversation, right? We're seeing a lot of load on our networks. But with some other things that this is going to benefit with our 5G deployment on top of our 4G deployment is also an opportunity to impact digital equity. The reason I say that is that... The reason I say that is that basically, low-income households tend to go wireless first. If you have a dollar to spend on a megabit, you don't have money to spend on both a home connection and a wireless connection, so you tend to go wireless. So we're trying to push down the cost of wireless connection and compete in that space. Cost per megabit will be decreased as we push into that space. A lot of homes only have one opportunity, maybe Frontier, maybe Comcast, whatever your incumbent internet provider is. At this time, we want to push into that space and create some opportunity for choice. So we want to see the cost per megabit actually go down so that we can push into that space to help impact digital equity. Another reason that we're trying to come into this space is that we see the opportunity for more economic development. We want to see the speed to market for businesses to open and develop go a lot quicker than what it costs now to get a wireline connection. That's usually one of the problems that companies have with opening their doors, they have to have a connection, right? You have to have internet in order to run your registers, in order to run your kiosks. So we want to be able to offer that to the businesses to be able to get to speed to market, home-based businesses to open faster, to be able to offer that opportunity for economic development. And years after, we've actually pushed in infrastructure that we're going to pay for at our cost, the community will continue to benefit from that for years to come. We also see that public safety is really important, and people think of public safety in terms of, well, what does this mean for me from an RF perspective? But what we're talking about is public safety, meaning that a lot of public safety entities are using our network. Consumer Fire is one of our customers. We're doing a lot with our 5G network as far as network slicing. What that means is we're actually able to separate the utilization on our 5G network. So if you have a gamer, it's not going to be using the same network as the police department and the fire department. This is going to give us an opportunity also to do what we call MECC, which is edge computing. So we're going to be pushing more of the computing to the edge of the network, which is going to allow things like body-worn sensors, heads-up display for fire and smoke detection, things like IoT for drones and other things of that type of utilization. We've also seen that there's about seventy percent of all nine-one-one calls are coming over the mobile network. So it's really important now that we not only have a network that's usable when we want to use it, it has to be usable all the time, twenty-four-seven, it has to always be on. So one of the things that this will give us an opportunity to do is to add points of RF so that we have an opportunity that if a macro network goes down, or if there's an issue with the small cell, vice versa, you still have some point of connection for your phone. So we're trying to bolster our public safety footprint with this network. So as I said, those are really three things that we're hoping to accomplish with our small cell network. It's really important to us that we come into this community and that we're able to keep all the communities, not just the major cities, on par, because, you know, those things are important for all communities, not just the major cities. So just, you know, just in summary, you know, like I said, we want to bolster digital equity. We want to increase economic development in the community, and we also want to improve public safety. So with that being said, I'll open myself up to any questions that you have about the small cell network that we're trying to provide.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for being here. I wanted to ask, thank you, and also thank you for outlining the benefits. So with that, what's your schedule for deployment for the rest of the city? Because we, from the map, you know, we saw on the northern edge and eastern side.
So this is just the immediate need. We haven't really looked at any other locations at this point because we'll have to amend it. I'm hoping that we'll be able to expand that map. I'd have to talk to the RF engineers about how quickly. It's really going to depend on how this first level of deployment goes, you know, how the permitting process goes, how quickly we get through permitting, how quickly we can get into our bill schedule. So it's almost like a partnership. It's really going to depend on both of us, you know. We're definitely going to push forward very aggressively. As you've seen, Verizon's been first on 5G. We're going to continue to stay ahead of our competitors, so we're going to be ultra-aggressive about getting these first twenty-three sites built. I mean, I'm hoping that by next year, we're doubling our map, but that's all going to depend on, again, this is driven by the utilization of the customers, and it's also driven by how quickly we can get through this permitting process to a bill process to an on-air process with the city.
Fair enough. Do you have an example from other cities that how long it's taken?
I can tell you in San Francisco, we've built over three hundred nodes in less than five years. I know in Sacramento, it was a very cooperative process, collaborative process, and I think we're up above two hundred nodes in less than a year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Couple of questions, and I apologize if I'm getting too far into the weeds on the technology or whatever, but unfortunately, the Exhibit A in the staff report, I couldn't see the 5G pushpins that were in the map, and I didn't bother to match them up with the list to see that the number of 4G pushpins didn't match up. And so I didn't realize there were two different antennas being deployed per your proposal. And so my question is, or several. One, what's the cost differential for you between a 5G antenna and a 4G antenna? Two, I've heard that a lot of times when companies are deploying 5G antennas, they're actually still running 4G technology. And so is that true, that a 5G antenna can run 4G technology? And if that is true, why wouldn't you want to deploy 5G antennas throughout in anticipation of the move to the new technology?
So the, first of all, I shudder to talk about the cost here in a public setting. We do have our competitors that pay attention to it.
Is there a difference? Is there a significant difference is all you have to get into?
It's not a significant difference. It's not a huge difference. But the way our technology works is that you have to initiate on 4G. So 4G is always going to be your fallback technology. So even though you're getting on a 5G signal, you have to have a 4G signal. Your phone's initially going to connect to the 4G network, and then it's going to look for, if you have a 5G phone, it's going to say, okay, now I'm initialized on 4G, I know where I'm at, where's the 5G signal? So the 4G and the 5G sort of work together. There's likely more 4G coverage in those areas where we don't have 4G pushpins, and that's why we're able to go to 5G. So there's probably a macro network that's strong enough to support that going directly to 5G, whereas in those areas where we had to put 4G nodes, there's probably a weaker or issue with capacity where we had to put in 4G before we even look at going to a fifth generation. So they kind of work together, right? So your phone is always going to look for 4G first, and then it will stay on 4G if it's just a 4G phone, and then if it has 5G on it, then it will go to 5G in burst to try to get a quicker, you know, kind of get on and off the network as fast as possible. So they sort of work together at this point.
So then projecting forward, would you see yourself coming back to retrofit those 4G antennas to a 5G antenna, or would you see yourself adding 5G antennas to, as you say, support the 4G network that you're building up?
Potentially. It's all based on customer demand. So if we see that customer demand picks up from 5G in those areas, we would look to either co-locate on those locations, or there may be, you know, again, technology's changing so fast, there may be a different way we can get 5G to those locations. I can't really say more than that.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, we're going to do it based on customer demand. So everything is dynamically driven by customer demand. So we, I couldn't tell you, if the pickup for, if we see a whole bunch of 5G devices that all of a sudden can't connect to 5G in a certain area, yeah, we would probably have to go back and revisit that with our RF engineers.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Nope, thank you. At this point, want to open for public comment. I see a couple speakers sign up to speak. First speaker up to bat is Sharon Lyons. And following Sharon is Mark Graham.
Anyway, Sharon Lyons, good evening, Mayor and council members. And I'm looking at the staff report, so it has different numbers than the, this is the contract I'm looking at. I'm looking at page fourteen of the staff report. It is five point two. It mentions licensee shall install signage and other mitigation such as power cutoff switches, and I'll say telephone, streetlights, to allow workers and third parties to avoid excess exposure to RF emissions. And if RF emissions are dangerous to the workers, and then it's dangerous for us. And I just thought of something as you were speaking. These light poles are thirty feet, and as I thought about the cell towers that we have everywhere, they're way up there. Most of the ones out by us are on PG&E lines, and they're high up. And now we're going to have small cells that are thirty feet as we walk by, ride by, drive by, wherever they are. So that's a real concern of mine. The next item is on page fifteen, right across, it's five point four. The licensee, which is Verizon, may modify or replace a small cell without the city approval, as long as the modifications are aesthetically the same, similar in size, weight, configuration, blah, blah, blah. My concern is not what's out, it looks like outside, it's what's inside the cell. And we know that more can be pushed in there, out to us. I'm concerned about cameras being put in there, voice and facial recognition, and other things. And to me, that's an invasion of our privacy, and we don't know whether they're going to be doing that or not. We would never know because you're not going to go and check that out. It's too dangerous. Right now, China is spying on their citizens. They all have numbers on them. Sixty Minutes had a wonderful program on channel thirteen a while back on that, and they're way ahead of us, and I hope we never get that way. Anyway, it's all coming close. Now, the next page is page twenty-eight, is the map, and Mr. Hume, I had trouble with that, those blue pushpins too, and that's why I'm addressing this. I was told there was only a citywide notification done. My concern is for those folks along Sheldon Road between Winko and Franklin Boulevard and south of Sheldon Road, there's neighborhoods there, and they were never notified of this. And I think it's extremely important, a simple letter that the city could have sent to those folks, neighborhoods, businesses, whatever, that would give them notification of this hearing tonight. This is a major change in how 4G, 5G is delivered, and they have the right to know, and I feel like they were left out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham again. I ask each council member to say before the vote, before you vote tonight, whether you read the staff report on this item from cover to cover. Yes or no? I sent you an email a couple days ago about this. Once again, thank you for the front yard rule. Antonio mentioned it. That's the best thing that you did when you amended the zoning code, keep them away from immediately adjacent to or across the street from front yards. About the contingency, yes, the city has a contingency plan for the rent, for the annual rent, and that's good. But what you don't have, and this is in my email from a few days ago, is a contingency plan for all the other things that the FCC order kind of makes you do, that you will not have to do if the FCC order is overturned, such as the shot clock, such as evaluating each proposed antenna as to whether it will close a significant gap in coverage, and such as the city is allowed to materially inhibit cell phone service through its code and its regulations. The contingency plan needs to be expanded to include all those. Let's see. The technical standards in Exhibit B should be rewritten to include some parameters like the effective radiated power in units such as microwatts per square meter. One hundred fifty microwatts per square meter is more than enough power. Also, this was number seven in my email, the city's ongoing operational standard requires some monitoring and reporting. That's Section five point two A. That is not in what you currently have. Also, it's not clear to me whether are the requirements for a minor conditional use permit. I think that should be clarified. The city should provide a street address for each one of these proposed cell antenna sites. You have something like GPS coordinates. Nobody can tell what those are. Please provide a street address. Insurance ought to be a prerequisite for the issuance of a permit. Also, this was comment thirteen, your technical standards, the text is illegible, even if you zoom it in to three hundred percent. And you should require Verizon to submit legible copies as a prior condition of signing this agreement. Also, Verizon needs to provide analysis that as proposed, the antennas will not expose people to more electromagnetic radiation than the FCC guidelines allow. Anyway, please read my entire email. Now, back to National Environmental Policy Act, it's, the details are in the email I sent you on December fifth and the one from this afternoon. Please read the entire thing. The city attorney is mistaken, with all due respect. It says, "Major federal actions include actions which are potentially subject to federal control and responsibility." Now, every permit, every cell antenna has an FCC identification number on it, and it's subject to the emissions guidelines in forty-seven CFR one point thirteen-ten. Though, that's how it's subject to federal control and responsibility. And you got to read, you got to read one point thirteen-twelve. It's right there, and it's very clear. NEPA applies in the city.
Thank you. There are no additional speakers, so I want to close public comment and invite the applicant to come on back up if you'd like to close it out.
Yeah, I did want to make a couple comments. As far as the constituents, again, this is Dante Williams, Verizon Wireless. The difference between the distances being eighty-foot, sixty-foot towers and these lower towers, this is a low-power solution. Those are meant to carry miles. Those are higher-power solutions. These ones carry maybe five to twenty watts. Those are much higher power. So that's why, you know, these are able to operate at a much lower height. They're meant to not carry that far. Several feet, hundred feet, thousand feet for 4G, a couple hundred feet for 5G. The other issue that was brought up was that how are we going to know what's inside? We submit drawings with all of our sites. We have equipment specs. It tells you what the equipment does. I've never, ever seen a camera installed in a radio in my career. Oh, and the question about the lighting, if it's, why is there safety signs? The safety signs are meant for people who are going to be working on, say, like the light. So if you're going up in a bucket truck, we want you to know that you're near an operating element, to call us first. There'll be a number on there, a knock number, there'll be automatic shut-off so that if you're up there, say, replacing the light, which a lot of these LEDs last ten years, so there's not a lot of light bulb replacement. But if you're up there working, we want you to know that you're up there working, you're radiating element, and that you, you know, call us to either turn off the site or you shut off the site and let us know that you're going to shut off the site. That's more of a, I'm going to be right near the antenna, and even right near the antenna, it's, you know, still something that's not going to radiate you right away. I mean, it's just prolonged exposure if you were standing near the antenna. So that's why we put the signage up so people know to call us and turn off the site if we're going to be working near the site. There was also questions about the, I just wanted to mention that recently, the FCC has spoken on 5G. There was a recent reevaluation of, you know, is 5G safe? The FCC said, "We've reevaluated, we're not going to change our standards. There's no reason to change our standards. We've looked through the studies." There's also a Wall Street Journal article about the FCC not being silent anymore on 5G and its safety. And then also, I wanted to mention that we do an EMF report for every single site that we build. We do that for both, for, you know, to hand in with our drawings, and we also do it for our compliance program. We have to, we do a theoretical before, and then after we turn on the site, we study the site to make sure that it's operating less than what we actually, it's usually less than what we theoretically, because we usually do, the initial EMF study is a hundred percent. Like, if this thing was going up full blast twenty-four hours a day, what would it do? And then we'll turn on the site, and then we'll study it again and say, what is it actually doing? And I've never actually seen a site exceed the theoretical number. But we do that for every single site that we build. So there will be an EMF report for every single site that we build, and it'll be on file in our drawing. Any questions?
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Just one final follow-up question. So if I understood your answers from our exchange earlier, the 5G antennas can run 4G technology, and while there is a cost differential, it's not what we called significant. Is there a reason why you would want to deploy out the old technology and have to come back and either co-locate or swap it out at a later date as opposed to just going to the 5G technology straight out of the gate?
And no, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. No, the 4G doesn't run the 5G technology. They're dependent upon each other. So your, basically what it is, is your phone is going to look for 4G first. Every single phone is going to maintain a 4G antenna. The 5G will only come into play if it can find a 5G signal, if you have a 5G antenna in your in your phone. So they're interdependent, but they're not the same technology. And the form, that's why you see the form factor of the cell site for a 4G site is a totally different equipment set than a 5G site. 5G is just a radio and an integrated antenna. And the 4G sites have radios. He called them, staff mentioned them as control units. Those are actually the radios and then the antennas on top. So they're actually different technology sets and different bands. So we're using 3.9 gigs and we're using traditional 700, 800 megahertz right now for 4G. But they're interdependent, meaning that your phone has to find, you won't go directly to 5G. Your phone has to find a 4G signal first and then it will initiate and say, okay, I'm a Verizon customer. I'm connected to your network. Then if it has a 5G antenna in the phone, it'll say, oh, let me go to a 5G site if there's a 5G signal.
Yeah, so regardless of this technology, the technology on the pole, is a 5G antenna able to emit a 4G signal? I understand that.
No.
Okay, all right. That was my misunderstanding. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, want to close public comment and, or close the public hearing and invite council members to deliberate.
I have a question of staff, just as a follow-up to that exchange. Does our ordinance allow future co-location should the demand, customer-driven demand reach a point where they want to deploy 5G in the areas where they already have their 4G antennas? Can they put a 5G antenna co-located with their 4G antenna and not run afoul of our 500-foot limitation?
We would be more looking at a equipment swap-out versus a co-location, having both 4G and 5G equipment on the same light pole. We'd look at, if they upgrade, we're going to upgrade them from 4G to 5G. That design is covered in our agreement. As long as those 5G antennas match what's in the agreement, they could do that swap-out.
And so then in that instance, and I may be getting into the weeds here, like I said, but I like to think things through. In that instance, are they required to restore the pole to original condition prior to the 4G installation and then add the 5G installation afterwards? In other words, if you're going to convert, put these boxes up and do whatever you need to do to make it a 4G antenna, and then you take that equipment off, I would assume that pole will have signs or where or something from that 4G installation, that then they can't just leave that as it was and put a new 5G antenna on there and call it good?
Yeah, we would certainly ask them to make repairs to the pole if there's a band, a mark from the bands that were installed on the 4G radios. So yes, the answer that.
Okay, so ask and compel are two different things. Is there anything in the ordinance that says you have to do this prior to?
I don't believe that there is. John, you know?
I'll find you the language, but I appreciate the agreement says that if they remove materials from our poles, they have to make any repairs to it and restore it. But if you give me a second, I'll find the language. I'm quite certain it's there.
I mean, I'm probably, like I say, I may be too deep in the weeds on this, but you can see where I'm going with this line of questioning is just want to make sure that it, you know, as 5G becomes the norm and they want to come back and saturate that technology, that we're making sure we're anticipating that.
Okay. Anything else?
So John, some of the points that Mark brought up again relative to, you already addressed the legal issues, but what about some of the technical issues? Are those some, are those any items that we should expand upon?
I don't think there's anything else. A big piece of Mr. Graham's argument was that NEPA applies. As I've explained, it doesn't. I understand why he might think that it does, but it just doesn't. And with respect to the agreement, it's virtually the same agreement that AT&amp;T got a few months ago that was approved by this council. I'm very comfortable that it's a sound agreement. There are components of it, as Mr. Graham mentioned, that are favorable to his point of view, including the 500-foot separation and the no adjacent to homes requirement. We did that largely as a result of his and his group's advocacy in that. We're trying to reach a compromise in that. So unless you have specific questions, I don't think there's anything further that the council needs to consider or address with respect to the public comment. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
No, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Good. John, are you close finding or members, you made ready to move on?
Yeah, with that, I'll move to staff's recommendation.
Okay, got a motion, sir second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Next item.
Take us on to item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider resolution amending the general plan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Christopher Jordan. Do have a number of items for you this evening, so please bear with us through them. Try to go through them quickly. The first one up this evening are amendments to the general plan. As you recall, back in February, you adopted the new plan. You mentioned, I think at that time and previously, that there would be cleanup items that would occur. We were anticipating one at the end of 2019, so here we are. There's five requested changes that are up here on the screen and we'll go through them tonight in more detail. Just real quick, some background to set the stage for this and a couple of the other items this evening. As you recall, the general plan is our long-range plan for the city, essentially the blueprint for how future growth gets managed and considered going forward. It does identify general locations and extensive land uses. We do this through a process called land use designations. The general plan is implemented by zoning, which sets the specific standards for permit requirements, development standards, height, setback and so on, and does that by dividing the city into a series of zones. We often refer to these things like RD5, LCG, CBP, LI and so on. And each of the zoning designations is implemented by one or more, like land use designations, the general plan is implemented by one or more zoning districts. And you can see that laid out here, for example, on this chart that we've clipped out as an image. By state law, the zoning must be consistent with the general plan. So any case where we have any consistency, we're required to update the zoning in order to conform. The first item we're asking for revision on this evening is regard to the description for the low-density residential description. This covers the density range for essentially single-family residential from 4.1 to seven units per acre. The table that's in the general plan for consistency between general plan and zoning identifies RD4 as being, RD4, we have an issue with the RD4 zone, excuse me, where the low-density residential description starts at 4.1, but the RD4 zone really stops at four units per acre. This issue's actually been around for a while. We've been doing a lot of research to figure out, okay, what did we do back in 2003? What was the basis with the code provisions and a number of other things? And essentially what it comes down to is the original zoning code we inherited from the county didn't regulate on a density basis. It regulated on a lot size basis. The general plan has consistently held the lot size requirements, which run from about 6,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet for the low-density range. So the RD4 is consistent on a lot size basis, but it may not always be consistent on the ground on a density basis. We could look at rezoning the entire city and all the RD4 areas that exist, RD5, and start to correct for that. It'd be a mammoth undertaking and it would confuse a lot of people. We think the better approach is actually to make a notes, both in the description of the low-density designation as well as in the consistency table, noting that for subdivisions approved prior to August of 2006, when our zoning code moved to a density-based system as opposed to purely a lot size standard, that are zoned RD4 then do not meet the minimum density requirements of the low-density residential designation, that may still be consistent provided the lot sizes comply with the lot sizes range provided in the general plan. So that'll address the consistency issue. And we have a lot of areas that are RD4. There's big sections of things like East Franklin, East Elk Grove and Laguna area that are like this. So again, to do these, we'd be talking about thousands of properties. The next change is on the consistency table itself. We're adding a couple of districts. Some of these were created back in the spring with the zoning code amendments. Others are proposed for your consideration tonight in item 9.3. These include parks and recreation, public services, several residential zones. On the residential zone side, we're suggesting these for two reasons. One, we believe there's greater control with potential product types when we differentiate these density numbers out, particularly in the RD8, 12 and 18 range. On the other side, in preparation for the 2021 housing element that you'll start considering in 2020 and then take action in '21, we'll need some of these zones in order to meet the density obligations of the regional housing needs allocation. Also, for the AR1 zone, we're suggesting adding a note there, grandfathering those existing lots in the rural area. As you may be aware, there's a number of places, particularly along Bader and Pleasant Grove School Road, that have AR1 lots. They're one acre in size. They were created by the county. But that whole area is designated rural residential, so has a two-acre minimum lot size. This change would continue the grandfathering of those lots. There'd be no change to them. The general plan would just recognize that grandfathering. And then lastly in the table, the RM1 zone, which deals with mobile home subdivision parks. We have one of these in town on East Stockton. We want to move the footnote that's there today, identifying general plan consistency, out of the footnote and into specifically the medium-density residential designation. From a density perspective, that project is consistent with the MDR range. That'd be the appropriate place to list it. There are two land plan amendments we're recommending this evening. The first is a site off of Sheldon Road at Crestwell Court backs up onto the Union Pacific Tracks. This is a smud substation site. It should be designated public services, not single-family residential, what it's currently labeled as. So that's a cleanup there. And then the second change is a block of units that are over in the Monterey Village subdivision over in East Franklin along Ocean Lane. These were incorrectly mapped with the general plan last spring to low-density residential and they should have been high-density based on their density. There's no change. These are all existing units, existing developments, so there's no net changes result. We do have a number of other land plan amendments. There's about a half dozen to a dozen or so that we're tracking. We've not brought them forward at this time because there is some new legislation passed by the state, Senate Bill 330, which creates certain limitations on the city to downzone property or change down the allowed density on a property. We are waiting for some guidance from the state on how they like to see that implemented and we'll have more to share with you in 2020 on that. So do expect at some point, we have planned a number of other cleanup items. The last set of changes are in the transportation plan. What we're suggesting here is four streets, Moser, Union Park, Elkmont and Iron Rock to be reclassified from local to minor collector. This does not change the roadway sizing. They remain as two-lane facilities, but the reclassification better reflects the volume of traffic and the character of the traffic that is on those roadways. It also allows those facilities for maintenance purposes to access a series of other funding sources by not being part of the local system but by being part of the collector system. In terms of environmental review for the proposed changes, you'll recall there was an EIR prepared for the general plan, which is certified last year. I won't go through all these points in detail, but suffice to say, from a process standpoint, you did certify it back in February on the 27th. The EIR is a programmatic EIR. It doesn't get into exact details for every single site, but it considers the totality of the general plan and the proposals that are included within it, compares it to existing conditions. In terms of this process, we've analyzed, skip ahead here, in terms, sorry. In terms of proposed changes, we believe that the general plan EIR remains sufficient for what we're proposing. The land plan changes do not increase the density of what's allowed. It's assumed in the EIR analysis. The transportation plan changes don't increase the capacity on roadways. And pursuant to State Secu Guidelines, Section 15162, no subsequent analysis is required. Planning Commission considered this at their meeting in November and voted 5-0 to recommend approval. Staff is also recommending approval this evening of adoption of the resolution, finding no further reviews required and amending the general plan. Available to answer questions.
Are there any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Christopher. Just a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand exactly in reading the staff report and listening to your presentation here. So with respect to the RD4 zone and that cleanup, what that is, because there are existing developments within the city that are zoned RD4, but don't meet the 4.1 minimum? And so therefore, they're really, they would fall under a state residential and not low-density residential?
Correct. So to give you an example, there are several sections of East Franklin, the old Baccor Ranch area, where you have, from a lot size perspective, both the prior general plan, the 2003 version and the current version, it has the lot size listed. The lot sizes in those subdivisions are consistent with the general plan. However, the net density and the gross density of those subdivisions is less than 4.1. It may be 4.0 or somewhere in between or 3.9, 3.8. But the character of the subdivision is really more consistent with the low-density residential. So we could look at changing everything to a state residential and then having that RD4 there. Doesn't really seem practical to do that approach. These have always been low-density residential dating back to 2003. There's been this confusion issue in here. We tried cleaning it up in the zoning code in 2006 and again in 2007. I think this approach is actually the best way because it creates some real specificity in terms of a time point and we can easily track back to that.
And so explain to me why this isn't just splitting hairs, why this is necessary in a built-in.
Yeah, I think there is a level of bureaucratic detail in this. And that's why we think rather than trying to go through and change a whole bunch of mapping and doing a whole bunch of noticing the folks and confusing everybody, doing this footnote really clarifies this so we don't have this confusion come up later and have a condition where somebody's looking at it and saying, well, wait, the density of the subdivisions, 3.9, so it can't be low-density residential. So if somebody was trying to do something in an RD4 zone, you'd have this general planning inconsistency and how do you rectify that? We've just noted it, we've documented it and it's all, we've identified it's all consistent.
So you're anticipating this potentially being used as precedence for a future development or something along those lines? We just want it codified that we know it's there, we know it's inconsistent and this is how we dealt with it?
Exactly.
Okay. And then my second question is with respect to the RM1 zone and moving that out of a footnote into the MDR designation. You call out that there's only one spot in the city that is an RM1 zone and that's an, again, an existing developed mobile home park. Would this then allow an MDR site to be rezoned to RM1? Would it allow the RM1 use to be permitted within the MDR site? I'm kind of.
Right. So the way the footnote works right now is it says the RM1 zone is consistent with all general plan designations. So you could actually, under that table, have an RM1 zone proposed in, say, a G, in a community commercial general plan designation or employment center designation. That's not the intent. The intent rather is you have a site with the right, that's identified for residential with the right density range, that's where a mobile home park ought to occur. We're limiting it to just the medium-density residential sites. I think the question of would a mobile home park be proposed on a site is really one more of market conditions. And we have one in town. We've never had one proposed in the last 19 years. I don't know that there's really a market demand in this part of the region for one. It's just not something we've seen come through. They've been fairly few and far between.
But if one, just again, to anticipate.
If one was proposed.
If one was proposed, they would find an MDR site and say, this is the use I want to put on this MDR site.
Correct. It would require a rezone and then a tentative map at a minimum in order to, for that project to be approved.
Wow, okay. Such an enthralling conversation. We just lost three young men who decided to tap out, but I get it. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's right. They're already like, these guys are walking out. I already know what's going on. Thank you, Christopher.
All right, any other questions? Nope, no questions? All right. At this point, I want to declare a public hearing open. Open for public comment. I see one speaker sign up to speak. Ms. Lynn Wheat, come on up.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Christopher Jordan for all of his hard work and kind of bringing things together. But what I'd really like to talk about is that we are looking at our higher density and I understand that we need that as we look at our affordable housing and what our quota is going to be and our needs that we need, you know, that we need to meet for the region. Well, part of that comes from your growth policies. So most certainly in the future, I hope that SAOCOG's not blamed for the number of affordable units that we need to have present within our community when you've had the growth policies and expanding and you're looking at steady areas and expanding outside our current city boundaries. One of my concerns, and I brought it up really in the process of looking at our general plan update, is that we are a very multicultural community and our ethnic diversity is something I cherish within our community. But what we are developing as a city and a community is economic segregation. And my concern is what's going to happen along Bruceville Road when we're looking at positioning all of our affordable housing product over within that area. We're going to be building another MAC road. And I can say that that's not favorable for many, many families that don't want to live in that particular environment. I asked early on for us to think about inclusionary housing as we were updating our general plan. But of course, that did not, there's no political will to do that. And we could experience things different within our community, but we're not. So what I am concerned about is the type of product that we're going to have. Look what happened with the Civic Center site. We didn't get what we were promised.[1783.16] I was at all those meetings, and you chose at that particular time to downzone that. That was supposed to be four-story apartments. The downzone was allowed. And what I learned that evening was if you build four stories, there's a requirement for elevators. So as you've gone on with this general plan update, and you've approved this, and you have your new numbers, it is not going to be favorable for some of our, some areas of our city. And now that we're a by district, how is that going to look? And how is that going to work? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There are no additional speakers, so I want to close public comment and close the public hearing. Counsel of Declarational Direction. Members? You good? I understand a motion there.
Move staff's recommendation.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? Next item.
Take us on to item 9.3, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code for Consistency with General Plan.
Okay, so this is the meteor of the items this evening. So we have three sections of the municipal code we're proposing for revisions this evening, titles 23, 22, and 30. Just again, you'll remember, we talked a moment ago about consistency between the general plan and zoning or the overall municipal code. So many of these are changes we're proposing this evening for that. There are also a number of changes recently to state law that some of these changes are reflecting, and then there's certainly others that are just based on the everyday use of the code and flagging things that could be better described or addressed. So I'll dive into summarizing the amendments for you. We'll start in Title 23, the zoning title. In 2310, the planning agency description, this is something we're required to describe. What is the planning agency of the city? It covers the city council, commission, staff, various staff levels, from the city manager to the Development Services Director, the zoning administrator. Proposing some changes here relative to real property transactions and the consistency analysis for general plan that's required to happen, proposing moving that from the planning commission to council. There's also a reference add to Chapter 2115 relative to the planning commission's role in reviewing capital improvement program and consistency there, and then a reference to the general plan annual report that staff prepares and comes before the city council. In Section 2314, this deals with the noticing requirements, proposing changing this. Right now, it says for any project in a rural residential general plan designation, you have a thousand-foot noticing requirement, which is higher than what we use elsewhere in the city. That's even higher than what's in state law. In this section, we're proposing changing it from rural residential to the rural area community plan. We have other areas of the city, or we could have other areas of the city that are more of a rural residential on an interim basis. We've tried to pull a lot of those out, but in the event there's any stragglers, this is a more defined boundary to use that. In the approval authority section, later in 2314, there's two changes. The first in Table 2314, which summarizes the approvals, we want to add references to map extensions for subdivision maps and parcel maps that are in Title 22, and then add the reference for density bonus that's in 2350, and we'll talk about changes in that section later. Section B of this section talks about the elevation process. So there's certain types of approvals that are done by the Development Services Director or the zoning administrator. Those bodies may elevate those actions to the planning commission for a number of reasons. We want to clarify that language. And then there are concurrent changes in the discussion of conditional use permits, as well as in the design review where those are applicable. Also in design review, we're proposing adding, clarifying the language on deviations, so that where there are other deviations elsewhere in the municipal code, particularly in Title 30, which we'll summarize this evening, that those are also included in that process. In 2324, the description of the zoning districts, we're adding in the new residential districts, RD8, 12, 18, and 40. We're doing revisions to RD25 to remove references to single-family dwellings. We think that's consistent with the density range. And then the RD30 zone to recognize the creation of the RD40 and the limits of the density range there. In 2326, this deals with descriptions of land use classifications, which is basically how we end up regulating what needs a use permit or is allowed by right or what's not permitted. There are three changes here. First, the description for not-for-profit businesses is changed to the new community assistance organization. Essentially, these are things like food banks or other social services like that where you have donations occurring and services that are not provided for a fee. Second, dwelling units is being changed to accessory dwelling units. It's based upon a change in state law. And then in fueling stations, we're adding a reference to hydrogen fueling, as well as a reference to electric vehicle charging where that's the primary use. If you're doing electric vehicle charging as an ancillary use, say, as at a shopping center at your home, that's exempt from this description. Table 2327 is the list of what requires a permit for each of those use descriptions based on each of the zones. So changes here, second dwelling units, the title change. Supportive housing, we're updating that consistent with state law to permitted by right in districts where we're required to, where there's other residential uses allowed. You have the change for not-for-profit to the community assistance. Additionally, here in the MP zone, we're proposing that require a conditional use permit rather than being not permitted. Except where the underlying general plan designation is industrial, then it would be allowed by right. So for example, the area where the City Hall complex is, it's an employment center general plan designation but has an MP zone consistent with general plan. That would require a use permit. If you were down, say, off of Union Parkway, that is an industrial designated area in the general plan, but also an MP zone, so that would be allowed by right. The outdoor event centers, we're removing that from the AG and residential zones per your prior direction. And then Footnote 6 and 9 for the office zones, we're referring to the underlying general plan designation rather than the description that's there about industrial uses. Table 2329 deals with development standards, heights, limits, setback requirements. So we're adding those for RD8 through 40, and then we're updating the minimum density standards for the 10, 15, and 20 zones to reflect these new zones. And then Footnote 7 is revised to more clearly allow for stair stepping of residential structures in the applicable zones so that you could have, any first-story area has the 10-foot setback requirement, and any second-story area is a 15-foot setback. In Part B of the table, which deals with the commercial mixed-use and industrial zones, we're proposing increasing the allowed height for the Village Center mixed-use and the residential mixed-use there, both as by right and then also within 100 feet of residential. There are only two of these sites, one each in the city. One is the city's North Civic Center property against Elk Grove Boulevard. The other is the property, portion of the property at the city recently acquired at Big Horn and Bruceville. Neither one of those directly about single-family residential. In 2340, this lists out the special planning area districts. We need to add references to the Autumn Mall SPA and CMT Courts. And then in the multifamily overlay, we're amending this to allow accessory dwelling units pursuant to state law. 2350 is density bonus requirements. This is a requirement of state law. There's been a lot of changes to this lately, so these updates reflect that. There's also some cleanup to the language on the application process and notifications that feels appropriate and are recommending. Table 2358-2 deals with parking requirements. We're updating this for storage uses based upon some recent permit activity and special studies that were done, as well as review of standards in other local areas and what we've seen on the ground historically with these uses. 2358040 deals with recreational vehicle parking. We're recommending a cleanup here to provide an exception for the screening requirement for recreational vehicle parking for properties that are two gross acres or more and/or in the rural area community plan. Again, we have these AR1 lots that are grandfathered in, so rather than holding them to a different standard just because they don't have the lot size, treat them the same as the adjoining properties that are two acres. 2358110 deals with off-street loading requirements. We're proposing to comprehensively update this. We're adding office uses. These requirements do not require docks as the sole solution. You can simply have a designated area for the loading to occur. We've done this in review of existing development standards and what other jurisdictions are doing. Section 2362 deals with menu order, 100.0C deals with menu order board signs. These are for drive-through uses. There's a cross-reference here that needed to be added. There's no changes in the standards that are occurring. 2368 deals with accessory uses. There's some confusion in the code about how accessory uses work, particularly with alcohol sales and accessory retail. We believe all of these are adequately covered in the allowed use table in 2327, proposing to repeal this chapter. Section 2384 deals with non-conforming uses. There's a change related to the RV parking standards that are there relative to clarifying non-conforming use allowance. Essentially, and then the vehicle replacement does not trigger new standards. So essentially, if you have a vehicle and your grandfather to have that parked at your home, just because you bought a new vehicle, got rid of the old one, it does not invalidate your grandfathering. 23.90 deals with accessory dwelling units. There's been a lot of activity this last year at the legislature, three bills in question. So staff's gone through extensively and updated these. Revisions deal with eliminating minimum lot size requirements, allowing a new type of unit called a junior accessory unit, limiting requirements for owner occupancy except in the case of a junior accessory unit, and then updating parking and setback standards. This section is consistent with the state provisions. There's not much room for the city to make revision, further revisions to the section. In 23100, there's a couple definition updates, accessory dwelling units. We're updating the definition for floor area ratio for better consistency with the general plan. And then the definition of the 200-year floodplain, we don't want to reference a specific figure, we just want to generally reference the general plan. There are a couple of other amendments in Title 22 and Title 30, first off, procedures for subdivision maps and parcel maps, the procedures for extending those. Want to give some clarification to the approval process in terms of what the zoning administrator's allowed to approve in terms of those extensions. And then in 30.90050, this deals with solid waste management, particularly for commercial locations and enclosure standards. We want to pull all this section out and simply refer to the city's design guidelines that are separate, a document that are updated by staff on an ongoing basis. But there would be the provision for flexibility through the design review process from those Back in March, you adopted the Phase 1 amendments to the zoning stuff, the zoning provisions. At that time, we did not recommend any changes to the floodplain overlay zone, and there was some alternative texts that we had that more closely matches what we're proposing this evening for the floor area ratio definition. Those changes were pulled out of what we had been drafting at that point and were published without the floodplain overlay changes and some earlier text for the floor area ratio. So your direction to us at the time was that's why you wanted to move forward, but you also asked for a couple of other revisions at that time. Unfortunately, and this is entirely my fault, my responsibility, these, we used an earlier version of that document rather than the version that was published in that packet from March, so we need to correct that. We understand that was not the council's direction. So in your packet this evening, our changes to the floodplain overlay to return it to its pre-2019 version, which is, understanding, consistent with your prior direction. And then relative to the floor area ratio, we've included those changes and previously discussed them this evening. Map amendments, there are a number of map amendments we're proposing for consistency. There's about 2,500 sites in total. We have pulled all those. They're not part of your consideration this evening. This is because of that Senate Bill 330 consideration. Again, we're waiting for state guidance on that. So those, we hope to bring back in 2020. Environmental review, we believe the general plan EIR is sufficient. There's no changes that increase the allowed density beyond that, considering the general plan EIR and pursuant to Secret Guide line, section 15162. No subsequent analysis is required. So recommendation of staff and your planning commission is finding no further reviews required and adopt the ordinance in a municipal code. Available for questions if you have them.
Questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Christopher, can you drill down for me what you just mentioned about the floodplain issue? The only thing I saw in the staff report was reference to a 200-year floodplain being referenced in the general plan.
So if you turn in the staff reports to... We have a summary of it at the top of Page 9 of the staff reports, and then the particular On Page 39 of the packets. So on Page 9, we describe it generally, but if you turn to Page 39 of the packet, it has the specific change occurring. What you'll see there in the underlying text is the language that existed prior to 2019. That's the original language the council adopted when we did all the Senate Bill 5 200-year floodplain requirements. Essentially, it created a restriction for healthcare facilities and other government facilities being built in floodplain areas. We had begun revisions to that code for better consistency with state law. There were concerns about how that related to the CNU project. So in beginning of March, late February, early March, based on the discussion that happened at the general plan adoption relative to CNU, we were pulling that revision and sticking with what's the crossed-out text. Again, unfortunately, because of an error on staff's part, it got added in for your second reading.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I want to declare public hearing open and open for public comment. I don't see any members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed.
Right. I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance, finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to State Secret Guide line, section 15162, and adopting amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code. Text amendments.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention? Next item.
Take us to item 9.4, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution amending and an ordinance implementing the Elk Grove Climate Action Plan.
Good evening. Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager for the city, and I'm going to talk about the amending and implementing the Climate Action Plan. The actions we're recommending are intended to ensure consistency related to the cap. The two actions include amending Measure BE7, which is related to solar photovoltaics, to ensure that the cap is consistent with the 2019 California Building Code, and amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code, Title 23, on zoning to add provisions for electric vehicle charging infrastructure with, to be consistent with what's in the cap already. We're recommending adopting a resolution to amend the cap and adopting an ordinance to amend the municipal code. So as you know, the cap was adopted by City Council in February. Measure BE7, related to solar photovoltaics, was included in the adopted cap and reads as shown. The stated requirements we included in our cap were that all new single-family residential would include onsite solar PV installation, which was consistent with what we were expecting in the 2019 Building Codes. In addition, non-residential and mixed-use development of at least 25,000 square feet would be required to be built as solar-ready. And this requirement was intended to provide sufficient space and structural integrity for the potential future installation of solar energy systems on-site. Subsequent to the cap being adopted, the 2019 Building Code was finalized with solar PV requirements that were more stringent than what staff had anticipated. So the Building Code now requires that all new multifamily or mixed-use buildings of 10 or fewer stories, all new non-residential buildings, three or fewer stories, and all additions of greater than 2,000 square feet be built as solar-ready. The Building Code requirements are greater than what is in our cap, as it covers a greater proportion of new buildings and will cover additions which our cap currently does not. By adopting this cap amendment, there is not a requirement for any additional regulations beyond implementing the Building Code. This amendment will keep our cap consistent with what is in the 2019 California Building Standards Code. The other recommended action relates to Measure TACM9 on electric vehicle charging. The first action item listed in the cap under this measure was to adopt an ordinance establishing minimum EV charging standards. The amendments to Elk Grove Municipal Code are all included in the zoning code and include a new section that has been added, as well as amendments to the general definitions section. So the new section, 23.58.120, electric vehicle charging, includes the requirements for all new one- and two-family dwelling units and townhouses to be pre-wired for future installation of one EV charging station. For new multifamily, commercial, office, industrial, and mixed-use development, the requirement would include both minimums for installation of EV charging equipment and pre-wiring for future expansion based on the land use type in accordance with the included table. So the minimum requirements for these types are no less than two parking spaces with the EV chargers already installed and two spaces which are EV-ready. The general definitions are updated to include definitions for electric vehicle, electric vehicle-ready, and electric vehicle supply equipment. I wanted to make sure it's clear about when the EV charging requirements are applicable with respect to changes in use or modifications to existing structures. So only changes in use or modifications that result in an increase by more than 10% in the number of required parking spaces would trigger the EV charging requirements. So for example, doing a home kitchen remodel would not require more parking spaces for the residents, so would not require the EV charging ordinance. So the majority of remodels for single-family residences and changes in commercial use would not trigger an increase in parking of more than 10%, and therefore, the EV charging requirement would not go into effect. So the changes to the Elk Grove Municipal Code zoning ordinance and the update to the cap are consistent with the analysis presented in the general... cap are consistent with the analysis presented in the general plan updated EIR, and therefore pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15162, no subsequent analysis is required. Alternative actions, the city council could elect to not adopt one or both of the amendments. The results of not adopting the amendments, the cap result related to solar PVs would mean there is an inconsistency and conflict between the cap and the California Building Code and Elk Grove Municipal Code. The results of not adopting the amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code would be an inability to enforce actions related to the EV charging requirement that were identified in our cap. So these alternative actions are not recommended by staff at this time. Finally, staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution amending the cap to ensure solar PV requirements are consistent with the Elk Grove, or sorry, are consistent with the 2019 California Building Code and adopt an ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 23 to implement the cap electric vehicle charging requirements. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Any questions? No questions, perfectly clear. Thank you. All right, I want to declare public hearing open, open for public comment, seeing I have one speaker, Selena Enriquez.
So when I signed up for public comment, I thought that I was signing up for something else, but you know what? Solar energy is great. I think I speak on behalf of a lot of my peers, I think that renewable energy is something that we need to focus on. I wanted to update you guys with what was going on with the Extrude Polystyrene Committee. I know that you had sat in on one of our meetings. I just wanted to let you guys know that we were progressing, but we were progressing slowly. I wanted to just get some closure on what the outcome of the committee was, because, you know, in the end, Elk Grove citizens are putting their time in to be there, get something done, clean up our city, and make an improvement environmentally-wise. So, you know, some clarification as to what the end goal might be. I know that we talked about the discussion, and, you know, discussion is great, but we've talked about it so much. We know the impacts of styrofoam. We know that citizens are wanting this. We know that for the most part, everybody's on board with getting Elk Grove cleaner. Everybody's on board with getting Elk Grove safer. So I guess the main point that I want to get across is that we need to start being a little bit more proactive in our goals for Elk Grove being cleaner. I know that we are all working very hard. Trust me, I've noticed how hard you guys are working, and I really appreciate that you've opened the opportunity to discuss it, because, you know, it is really important that we get people of all levels to be talking about it, people on the corporate level, people in the youth, people in the elderly. We have everybody on that committee. I mean, we're hearing many different perspectives, but we're not coming to agreement. And I think that's where we need to meet at, and it's what's best for our community, not what's best for them, not what's best for the people who have profits in mind. It's what the youth want, it's what the people who live here are going to be directly impacted by. So I guess I would just like to conclude with, thank you for being, you know, proactive. Thank you for trying to get something done, but I think it's time that we have a course of action in mind, something, an end goal would be nice to know of, because at the moment, we're kind of confused as to what we're even doing there. Are we there to talk, or are we there to get something done? So again, thank you for opening up the discussion, but I think it's time that we actually move forward.
I believe we had a meeting about two weeks ago. I wasn't able to sit in on it, but I know that my peers were able to. They said that it was really tense. I know the person who was leading it, Heather, her boss was there, and he was like, yeah, we're not really moving forward. Everybody's just kind of arguing over who gets the bigger say, who has a louder voice here, and that's all I know from the last meeting, but I know that the meetings that I have attended, it's just been overall really tense. It feels like there's an imbalance of power at the meetings. It feels as if the youth, their voice is less regarded as the people who are adults in the room, when we're the ones who are going to be directly impacted by any new ordinance. Yeah.
Jason, do you have any more feedback on what's going on with that committee, by any chance?
I haven't attended any of the meetings, but I know Bob's attended the last one.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's unfortunate you weren't able to go to the last meeting. Actually, we do have a path forward. We were able to get everybody together and agree, and the students were going to come back to us with what we said was, we're going to do outreach directly to all of the restaurants. And so the first task was to go out and survey all the restaurants and decide, and try to get information back to the group to be able to say, who's doing what? You know, what materials are you using? What alternatives have you considered? What cost differentials do you know about? Do you know about? And we'd give them information about materials, about alternatives, and the idea would be the students would take some type of perhaps electronic survey monkey with them, ask a bunch of questions, and then we'd gather all that information and use that information to really develop perhaps an information campaign to see how effective we are in moving restaurants from where they might be to where we would like them to go. I think the consensus on the committee was that restaurants are probably further along than people are giving them credit for, and if we went out and actually gathered the information, we'd find that out, and we might be able to come up with a program to encourage those that are still using styrofoam to use other products as a way of not necessarily forcing them to do it, but encouraging them to do it. And so the committee, those that attended the committee, were encouraged by that, that that was a good step forward. As, as the young lady had stated, there was a lot of talk leading up to that point, and I think we were able to, through the last committee meeting, focus them, and so now they see a path forward. And so where we're headed now is, we need, the group is going to start to develop the survey they want to use, and we're going to come with, we're going to develop a list of the restaurants. We're going to start talking to schools about having the students getting service credit to be able to take the survey, go out to the restaurants in the vicinity of where they live, and do the survey and bring that back. So we have a couple of things in motion with, with that idea in mind of reaching out to the restaurants, getting the actual data on what's really going on, and seeing, you know, where we are, and seeing what it would take perhaps to move the rest of the restaurants away from styrofoam and onto other, other products.
Is there any timelines yet?
We don't. We, we were going to get together again, it was an agreement, we'd get together again in January and try to get the feedback on the type of survey. So we've, Heather was going to organize essentially an online group that would get together and start working on the, on the survey questions with the idea of hopefully developing, developing that and going out in the early part of next year and gathering that information. How long that will take, will take, we're not sure. It will depend on how many student volunteers we can get that want the service credit. So that all still has to come together, but we do have a distinct path forward on what, what the group wants to do now, and we, everybody there was in agreement, that's where we're headed.
All right, good.
Okay, there's a pathway. There's a pathway now.
Yes, there is a path, but I think the kind of clarification that I'm asking for is, like, what is the end goal, I guess? I know that we want to get rid of styrofoam, but I feel like it's more talk than it is action, because like, there are a lot of restaurants that, that we've talked to already, like, my group and my peers have already talked to several restaurants. Hokey Pokey includes one of them. I spoke to them personally that said, you know, this transition has improved our business. This transition has not impacted our business in a negative way. And so at the moment, it kind of feels just like fluff work, like we're just kind of doing stuff to just do stuff, not get somewhere, although that may not be what it is. I would just like to address that.
Selena, is, is your goal a law or getting people off of styrofoam?
Some kind of ordinance that is environmentally-friendly food packaging, something that requires a biodegradable substance to be used for food packaging. So it doesn't have to be like a styrofoam ban, it could be an environmentally food packaging ordinance, just something that, you know, gets Elk Grove towards that cleaner state.
But if people are, if Hokey Pokey and others are moving off it because of this education of their own free will, is that what you're looking for, or are you more focused on the, on the ordinance?
Well, the problem with that is local businesses, local restaurants are, I feel like, more willing to make that change, but we also have to include the restaurants like Panda Express, like Jack in the Box, like those chain restaurants that aren't really, I guess, directly super-impacted, like Panda Express uses all styrofoam, and so that would be something that we would have to address, too. Talking to the local restaurants is easy, all you have to do is show them the information, be like, all right, you know, is this, is this okay for you? Are you able to make this transition? But talking to those chain restaurants, it's like, okay, chain of command, go up to this guy, go up to that guy. And so I think what my peers and I, I think I speak for them when I say that, we all want Elk Grove to be cleaner, we want some kind of ordinance that makes sure everybody has to do this, not just some people, not voluntarily. It needs to come faster, because the climate crisis that we're dealing with right now is coming fast, and it needs to be done, not on a voluntary basis, because it's not happening quick enough.
Thank you.
All right.
John, have you addressed this with any of your colleagues relative to ordinances that are being done statewide?
Well, I haven't specifically addressed it with colleagues in the region. I know that the cities do have ordinances that are kind of all over the map, including banning them, and I haven't specifically looked into what the different agencies in the region are doing, largely because I was deferring to what the committee has been coming up with, and then I was going to react to that.
Okay. I, Selena, I appreciate you coming here, because you actually raised some very good points, and what month was it you guys originally spoke to us?
Geez, I think it had to be maybe June when we gave the presentation.
So we're like six months?
Yeah, it's been quite some time.
And, and, but I understand what you're saying, right? Six months is a long time. So, you know, Bob, maybe, maybe if you can have a real, even if it's an email to us or something with a, like a monthly summary where we're at and where we're going, because I agree, sometimes without making something mandated, some people aren't going to do it, and the big corporate chains are, that's going to be really difficult to get them to change.
And, I mean, they don't care about whether Elk Grove gets dirty or not, they'll still have business. I mean, it's about us that care about Elk Grove being clean. We're the ones who have to live with the trash, they don't, so.
Yeah, well, there's some of the corporations that their headquarters are in other states, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. No, I think you did, and you did a great job tonight.
Good job, Selena.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. There are no additional speakers sign up to speak, so we'll close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Counsel will be ready to make a direction.
Motion one.
Second. Got a motion one, second, to all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extension?
Motion two. Introduce, go ahead.
Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance amending a portion of the Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 23 zoning and to implement the Climate Action Plan electric vehicle EV charging requirements.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extension? All right, next item.
Take us on to item 9.5, a public hearing to consider resolution amending the transportation
Okay, on this item, you'll recall back in January, concurrent with the general plan, you adopted the transportation analysis guidelines. There are two amendments we're requesting here this evening. The first is on the flow chart for land use projects, and the second is on the transportation network diagram. One of the things the VMT, the transportation analysis guidelines do is provide the guidance for doing vehicle miles travel analysis. It also looks at roadway performance system, how that evaluation occurs, as well as operations pedestrian and bicycles facilities. So this is the figure one that exists in the document today, walks through the four steps that you go through to do the analysis. As we were doing some staff training and working through some implementation on potential projects, we caught an error in Section Four, Step Four, it's highlighted here in the red box. The text of the document's correct, but the flow chart itself needed some clarity. But as we started working with those revisions, it actually tracked up further, all the way up to Step Two, about better ways to clarify how this process works. So with that, we're requesting this revised figure one. The steps themselves are the same, the questions that you go through are the same, but it's illustrated in a more logical way, in a clearer way for the different types of projects. Essentially, projects that are within the existing city limits go through the green step process, through the green channels, and then study areas, those areas that are potential annexation areas are through the orange channels. The second, jump ahead, the second revision is on the transportation diagram. These are the same changes you considered and approved a little bit ago with the general plan relative to the four roadways. So this just updates the figure in the document to reflect. The EIR prepared for the general plan is adequate for considering these revisions, and no further review is required. Staff's recommendation that the planning commission is to go ahead and adopt the revisions. Questions if you have them.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. No questions on the subject matter, per se, but since we were geeking out on planning issues earlier, I'm going to geek out on presentation issues. What program did you use to make the, the flow chart document?
The flow charts are created, I believe, in Adobe Illustrator.
And that's the same one that you did just now to show that moving dash line?
No, that's all PowerPoint.
Well, that's in PowerPoint?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No, thank you. At this point, we're going to declare public hearing open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Counsel will be ready to make a direction.
Counsel's recommendation.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extension? All right, next item.
This item is an update to the rural roads policy and the rural roads improvement standards. These were adopted by the council back in 2007. They outline the process for determining when roadway improvements are needed in the rural area, as well as the standards for those roadway improvements. The 2009 general plan established the rural area community plan, and the boundary was slightly modified from that that we've historically used for the area to include the subdivision off of Mill Pond Court, that's just north of Pleasant Grove High School and Albionni Middle School. So on the left in blue is the existing diagram that's in these two documents. On the right is the figure for the rural area and the community plan, so we're just asking for those two sections to be modified, bring it all into consistency. There is one other area here that's getting clarified, and that's up off of Grantline Road, this little notch area. I'm not sure exactly why this version of the boundary in 2007 squared everything off, but that's technically not the city limits, it is this notched-out area that's over here in the proposed graphic, so that change is also occurring. No further reviews required under sequel for these changes under 15183 and 15162. And again, staff's recommendation that the commission is to go ahead and adopt the revisions. Any questions if you have them, I'm available to answer.
Are there any questions? No questions. All right, I want to declare a public hearing open, open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment opportunity and declare public hearing closed.
Who's staff's recommendation?
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extension? All right, next item.
All right, last one from me this evening. This is an update to Laguna Ridge specific plan, a comprehensive update to the document. This document was adopted in June of 2004, covers approximately 1,900 acres. Elka Boulevard in the north, Bruceville generally on the west, 99 generally on the east, and Poppy Ridge Road and Bruce Bilby Road on the south. There've been a number of land plan amendments over the last 15 years or so that the plan has been in place, as well as two text amendments that the city has proposed, one in 2010 and one, I believe, in 2014. The document generally is organized into these sections and has separate documents that relate to them, one, the finance plan that was adopted in 2015, as well as supplemental design guidelines that have been updated and adopted and updated by staff as various phases of the development have moved into construction. No comprehensive update of the document's been done. To this point, we've not done any republishing of it based upon the changes that have happened, so all the original maps are still in it, all the original text is still there. There's been updating to utility master plans, particularly a result of adoption of the southeast policy area. We do have some updated procedures and practices for development projects that the document needs to be updated or conform to, and then there were some general plan, land plan changes from 2019 that the document needs to reflect. So just in quick summary of those revisions, again, the land plan, the acreage data, all gets updated. The description for the Civic Center is getting updated as well, and we've updated the figures that are there, the illustrations to show the commons and Will's potential development for the north property. That particular piece is conceptual and obviously subject to change. Comprehensive update to Chapter Three in the land uses, we'll talk about that in a little bit. We're updating references to the city improvement standards in Chapter Four. All the utility service diagrams are getting updated. We've also updated the finance section, particularly to reference the community facilities district. And then the administrative provisions in Chapter Nine have also been updated based on city practices. So in Chapter Three, talk about those a little bit more detail. The plan, historically, has had its own land use categories. These act like zoning in that they have development standards and some allow use provisions, but in some cases prefer back to the zoning code. So where the specific plan is silent, the zoning code then governs. It requires you to end up looking at two different documents, look at these standards, try to figure out what, what conforms. At the end of the day, our zoning code, when we did the big update in 2006, used Laguna Ridge specific plan as a base for many of those standards. So really, we don't have a lot of inconsistencies between them at this point. So our proposal is to remove all those development standards, the setbacks, the allowed use provisions that are unique and special, and just defer back to the general zoning code. There's a table, which is shown here, which translates the existing... There's a table which is shown here, which translates the existing specific plan land use designations to the zoning districts. What this allows us to is retain the specificity for things like the water treatment facilities and fire stations, the parks and the types of parks that are there, open space and parkway facilities, and, you know, generally deal with them at the zoning level like we would normally do, but still have that specificity in the plan about what those sites are meant to be. So here is an example, just a couple of sites that you may have, a site that's identified as RD7, the specific plan, it's RD7 zoning, so there would be, you know, just go to the zoning code for that. In the case of a water treatment facility, you'd look at the public services zone, in the case of the business professional office, you'd look at the BP zone. So that's just generally how that would work. The other big change here is regarding single tenant commercial buildings, so back in 2004, there was a lot of concern about essentially the big box uses, you know, think of these as uses that are over 100,000 square feet, retail uses. The specific plan included a requirement that any single tenant space over 100,000 square feet required a conditional use permit from the city council. So for example, the Walmart store at Bruceville and the Costco on Elk Grove Boulevard, both required a conditional use permit, so they went through planning commission to come to this body. We understood from the text and the history of the document, the intent was to ensure the land use and high quality architecture were consistent with the surroundings, there were certain design guidelines that were adopted by reference in the specific plan from Fort Collins that deal with design of large format retail establishments. Those actually got adopted into our zoning code in 2006, so we have, again, this repetition happening. We've also adopted a couple of times in the latest version in 2011, updated permit requirements for large format retail, calling out certain types of uses are not permitted, others do require conditional use permits, particularly from the planning commission. So what you end up with is that uses that are elsewhere in the city should go to get a conditional use permit exclusively from the planning commission, but if they're in Laguna Ridge, they have to go through a two-hearing process. And at the end of the day, we have design review that looks at these issues as well. So two options were explored, the first was to eliminate the CUP requirement, this is what's drafted in the documents and what the planning commission is recommending along with staff. This would just subject these uses to major design review like they are today. If there's a use permit requirement for the use, it would go to the planning commission, those are bundled together. So unless there's something else about the project, for instance, a specific plan amendment, a general plan amendment, a rezone, a development agreement, the planning, the city council would not consider that request. The other option, eliminate the CUP requirement, require that the major design review for these classes of buildings be subject to council approval, it would retain that two-tier process where projects in Laguna Ridge are unique in terms of their approval process from projects elsewhere in the city. We don't recommend this, we don't think this is necessary at this point, given all the other design procedures and reviews that we have that did not exist in 2004. So again, staff and the commission are recommending option one. In chapter eight, again, this has been updated particularly for the Community Facilities District to reference the bond financing, the long-term maintenance for those facilities that was created in 2005, so it's just the age of the document at this point doesn't reflect that. We've also simplified the content and updated to reflect the current status of infrastructure, development and phasing. In terms of environmental review, there was the Laguna Ridge EIR prepared in 2000, certified in 2004, the general plan EIR in 2019. None of these changes increased the density or intensity allowed, considered in either of those documents, particularly the general plan EIR. All the site disturbance issues were covered in Laguna Ridge EIR, so pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, Section 15183 and 15162, no further review is required. So again, staff and planning commission recommendation is adoption of the proposed amendments. Available to answer questions?
Alright, any questions? Nope, no questions. Thank you. Want to declare public hearing open, want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed.
Who's staff's recommendation? Thank you.
Got a motion second. All in favor?
You guys woke up finally.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Next item.
Our last item is 9.8, which is actually four public hearings, it's the 49th Annexation to CFD 2003-2 for police services, 55th Annexation to CFD 2006-1 for maintenance services, 37th Annexation, the Street Maintenance District 1 Zone 3Z, and the 30th Annexation, the Stormwater Drainage B Zone 2.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Kara Taylor Seaman, I'm a finance analyst here at the city, and the public hearing tonight is, pertains to the annexation of a project to the city's special tax districts. I do have a brief summary related to tonight's proposed action. As a reminder, the city does maintain eight special tax districts, the requirements are unique by, for the land uses, or the uses, whether they're residential or commercial, as well as the geographic location of each project. Annexation into the appropriate, into the appropriate districts is typically part of the approval process, and all are subject to annual rate adjustments. There is one project slated for annexation tonight, and that is the Pleasant Grove Road, Pleasant Grove School Road Project. It is the, to be annexed into four districts, CFD 2003-2, which is police services, CFD 2006-1, which is maintenance services, and then Street Maintenance District, Zone 3, and Stormwater Drainage Zone 2. This slide shows a map of the general area of the project. It is northwest of Grantline Road and Bond Road, and it contains three single-family residential units. That concludes my summary and my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? No questions?
Thank you, Kara.
Alright, good job. I want to declare public hearing open for CFD 2003-2 open, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, close public comment and declare public hearing closed for CFD 2003-2. Any motions?
Motion A1.
Got motion A1. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Alright, tabulation, please.
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax to the rate of portioning described, the measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the elections available for council consideration.
Okay, motion A2.
Motion A2.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor? Say aye. Opposed, abstention? Alright, motion A3.
Introducing way of full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2, Police Services Annexation Number 49, amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.18.010.
Got a motion second, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention? Want to declare public hearing open for CFD 2006-1. Want to open for public comment, I do not see any members of the public signed up to speak, want to declare public hearing for CFD 2006-1 closed. Motion B1.
Motion B1.
Got a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstention? Tabulation, please.
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax to the rate of portioning described, the measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the elections available for council consideration.
Motion B2.
Motion B2.
Got a motion?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
A opposed, abstention?
Motion B3, introducing way of full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 55, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
A opposed, abstention? Alright, at this point, want to declare public hearing open for SMD 3Z Annex 37. Want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment and declare the public hearing for SMD 3Z Annex 37 closed.
C.
And before we go too fast, there is no majority protest of three possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property, three affirmative votes were returned, the ballot approves, the proposed assessment, and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots, and a resolution determining the levy assessments in the districts available for council consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Motion C.
Got a motion?
Yes, sir.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention?